The Fort Thomas Planning Commission meeting this evening. First on the agenda is a review of our minutes from February and March of 2023. If the members would like to review those minutes and offer any comments to City-Staten. I was not in attendance at either February or March.
I was there. I will move to approve the February 15th minutes as drafted, as well as the March 15th, 2023 minutes as drafted.
All second.
Any other comments or questions? I'll signify the rev by saying aye. Go order. Next up on the agenda is a plat for lot split at 501 and 435, I'm sorry, 455 Chesapeake Avenue. Kevin, do you want to give us a briefing on that?
Yeah, so this lot, if you'll look at it, it's kind of odd. We actually approved a lot. Where the two flag stems are on this proposal, we actually approved this lot to be built a year or two ago. There was some land behind here, and there's a right-of-way, well, there's an alleyway off to the right, a 20-foot wide private lane. And at the time, Jan Sidenpaedon, you know, she did the research on that, and because of the width, that could not be used as a right-of-way. And there may have been some other nuances there. So they couldn't gain access off of that, so they had to come off of Chesapeake. And to make it work for this parcel behind, they decided to essentially take out the lot that they created prior and use those for the flag stems to create the two lots. The surveyor did look at the deed restrictions, I'm sorry, the deed history, and determined that no more than two lots have been subdivided off that property in the last, since '66. So there wasn't really a true development plan. My concern is there was a lot of trees on the site, and if we could get a development plan, you know, that's something that we obviously like to regulate trees, but it really did not, it did not, hadn't been split in that period of time. So that being said, there was also a small land addition to the Joyce Scott property, which is adjacent. That's the second part of that, where a small portion was going to be divided off to the property in the center, front center. So it appears to have everything that we need in place. If you certainly have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
I guess I have one. I guess I have one question. It shows Lowell Scott, or Scott Lowell, I guess, as a property owner here, but then it seems like that's the same lot that's owned by the Stat Miller. I guess I was confused, is Scott Lowell Lot 2?
Yeah, so the Stat Miller owns the large parcel behind, that one over the Lowell Scott property, that is an individual parcel that was owned by, that is owned by Lowell Scott. And that, it will now be...
Conveyed to the Stat Miller?
It will be...
Or is it just mislabeled? That's what I'm trying to say.
No, no, Stat Miller and Lowell Scott are both selling their property.
Oh, okay. So those are the existing property owners?
Existing, that's what it is. Those are existing property owners.
And it's going to be combined into a single lot then?
So that one, that one is being removed to create the two lots in the back. And then, you know, upon completion of this, recording this, it will be recorded in Mr. Paul's name?
An entity named by me.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be the trust, I guess.
So I guess that's the current owner, but...
So that's what I'm saying, though, you're combining two lots from Lot 1 and then yours.
Yes, you're creating, this was one large lot behind, and so that's a portion of two lots, and then using the other lot to create the two stems.
But there won't be any residual ownership for Scott Lowell or Lowell Scott, ever, isn't it?
No, I don't think so.
No, no.
Okay. But that's like the existing parcel line, like right here, I guess?
The existing parcel line is the same line as Joyce Scott, the left line of Joyce Scott in the front, and that heads, the left line of that heading straight up that's dotted kind of now. That's kind of the existing parcel. It almost looks like a little shoe there, or boot.
Right, that's why I wasn't sure if that was the line or not.
So basically, we took two lots and were reconfiguring two lots, ended two lots.
Right, yeah, it's two for two.
We approved this in theory, but didn't have a quorum like two months ago, is that correct?
Right, I think that was the case. We really didn't take any action, we just kind of looked at it really quickly, and did we have any concerns? And, you know, we've obviously done a little bit of legwork there and didn't have any other, I don't think him or I had any other items.
The minutes say that, you know, as long as the final plat and legal description meet the zoning ordinance, yeah, we didn't see any reason not to approve it. So we have already looked at it. Are there any other questions, comments? I'll make a motion to approve the lot split path plat for DCCI Solo 401 K Trust off of Chesapeake Avenue.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Everyone approve by saying aye.
Aye.
So order. Next is a land addition, 31 Sheridan Avenue.
This was brought to my attention today, and something that I would like to, if we, you know, approve this, that I'd like to make note of and assure that it gets kind of cleaned up before we release it. I noticed that the property owner and the applicant, the property owner actually was representing the golf course. So this small portion of property at the back end of the lot at 31 Sheridan is actually part of the golf course. And Kevin David is actually the chairman of the board, so he's the applicant, but I think we'd probably like to just assure that the entire board is, despite the fact that he's the board president, you know, assure that there is a, they're totally in agreement to that as the board itself. That's the one caveat that I thought was a little bit odd.
And if I could say, for whatever reason, I can't seem to get this...
Just push it easy, quick, easy.
Thank you. Actually, Kevin is not present at this point, it's Mike Cardisty. I know that this matter had been addressed by the board, but I think what we really should do is have them issue a, really a resolution, that probably is what it would be from them, indicating that they're in agreement with this. And you can, if you wanted to, if you thought this was appropriate, you could approve it conditionally based upon that document from the country club.
Or we can table it until we have the documents?
It's up to you all. I don't know, I'm not sure why you would. I think the country club, from what I was advised by Mike Cardisty, they're in agreement with this, but I, as a city attorney for the city, I'd like to have something in writing in the files as well, but I was informed to go fond of this.
We'll make it conditional that it can't be recorded until there's a resolution. The only question I had, Kevin, was the retaining wall that's along this lot line, is that just, I guess presumably that was intended to be along the lot line, but it's slightly offset by the...
Right, and I think they're...
It's not technically on the lot that's being considered here?
You know, no, it's not. I think this lot, this particular lot went before the Board of Adjustment, there was a little bit of contention associated with it, the building of this. There's currently a house being built on the primary structure, or the primary property. And I'm not sure if that's why the surveyor put that on there. Every once in a while, they do put on things like that, we've seen sheds and things like that, that they'll note on there periodically, but I think the, it really doesn't have to be there, but it is.
It's not an encroachment or anything, is all I'm saying.
It's not.
The land surveyors notes a number one, no encroachment unless noted.
Right, that's why I just wasn't...
Yeah, my concern, my fear is whoever owns that retaining wall is responsible for the maintenance upkeep up. So if that thing fails, it's going to be the Dover's responsibility to fix it.
There was, Mr. Schultz, we were talking a little bit beforehand about the transition of property and the ownership of the property, and I think, you know, similarly to Mr. Paul's, I think, you know, that the transition of property generally, I think, wouldn't be done until, you know, this was, it was approved by this body, you know, this, this, there wouldn't necessarily be a transfer of property before this plat, I don't believe. And I think it would be, like you said, maybe that could be part of the resolution, that, you know, we are intending to sell this as, and we are an approval of this, this transfer, that could be part of that resolution.
This may not matter either, I don't think it does, but do you know why they have this whole detail down here with pavers at the bottom of the plat?
That's something I'd missed, I don't know what that is.
It looks like it was something that was on another drawing that got cut face of accident, or it wasn't exclusive.
It almost does, isn't it? I could certainly, if you want to make that a condition, I can certainly have them clean that up if it's not...
Yeah, I think if, if they're going to go through the effort.
We did make the note down there by the vicinity map, the typical note, that this is not a standalone buildable lot, that, you know, it is being attached to the other
So you're saying this parcel not buildable?
It's a not, not a standalone buildable lot, you know, if they were to choose to build something on it, or like, you know, a shed or something like that, that could be possible, but it's not a standalone lot. And that's, that's kind of typical language that we put in here for land additions, that if it doesn't have right-of-way access or anything like that, that it's a, it's not a true buildable lot.
Are there any other questions that come in?
I'll make a motion to approve the land addition to 31 Sheridan Avenue with two conditions. One, that we receive some kind of memorandum from the country club's board of directors that they are in agreement to sell this property to Kevin David. And also, the secondly, that they clean up that little paver detail next to the graphic scale on the plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All affirm by saying aye.
Aye.
So order. Next up is a presentation by CT Consultants regarding the zoning code update. This is consideration of Phase 2 of the Unified Development Plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Kevin and CT.
If I may, really quickly, just to, kind of the same spiel that I've given before every meeting, please, if you'd like to speak, get your name on a list up here, the microphone, name and address. We'd like to limit folks to about, you know, five minutes if we can, I'd like to stand hard and fast at that. And if we could minimize repetition, if there's something somebody's already said, you can certainly, hey, I support what they say, but we don't need to hear it twice. So that's all we have at this point. Alisa?
Good evening, can everyone hear me? Good evening, I am Alisa Duffy Rogers with CT Consultants. With me this evening is Frank Twihus, who's also with CT, and thank you so much for having us here. So tonight, we will briefly review the zoning ordinance update process, we will review three proposed overlay zoning districts, and these are the Fort Thomas overlay zoning district, Central Business District, Historic Overlay District, and the Tower Park Historic Overlay District. And then we will end with next steps. I will stop twice during the presentation to answer questions and to hear from any community members. So the zoning ordinance update is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase includes an analysis of existing conditions, both in terms of the city's built environment, as well as a thorough examination of your zoning and subdivision ordinances. We concluded that phase and produced the diagnostic report, which is currently on the city's website. In Phase 2, that includes creating revised regulations and indicating the major changes from your current code and what's being, and we are currently in Phase 2 now. In Phase 3, we will complete all the amendments and align the zoning map with any new zoning districts. And then Phase 4 is adoption. So the takeaway from that very long explanation is that we're still in Phase 2, this, we're still talking about things, we're having conversations, and even though there's draft text in front of the planning commission, that really is a starting point for their conversations. We have added additional opportunities for community members to discuss proposed changes and to ask questions. On a Thursday, after the planning commission meetings, we hold what we will call an office hours at Fort Thomas Coffee. It's from 10:00 to 11:45 tomorrow, as well as from 6:00 to 8:00. Please feel free to drop in anytime during those hours, there's no set agenda, it's really just meant to be a conversation. At the planning commission meeting the following month, I will report out to the planning commission the concerns and questions that were raised during office hours. Last month, we had approximately 10 community members attend, and we discussed potential development along US 27, concern with residential development over the commercial uses on US 27 and in the proposed neighborhood commercial office district, the maintenance of commercial tenant spaces, standards needed for parking structures, a historic district for Tower Park, the unique character of Fort Thomas Avenue outside of downtown Midway, having appropriate transitions between single-family detached dwellings and commercial development on adjacent parcels. We talked a little bit also about proposed section, which was Section 110, which is waivers. We also talked about the zoning of the non-residential parcel at South Fort Thomas and Bivouac Avenues, and we also talked about additional public engagement for the zoning ordinance As we had discussed previously, the city has broken down into zoning districts that govern how properties can be used and where buildings can be sited on parcels. The zoning map shows where these districts are located in the city, and there are base or underlying zoning districts, which you see listed on the screen. And then these districts also impose the baseline zoning standards for each lot. So let's stop for a second. Are y'all doing okay seeing the screens?
Yeah, I can see it. Thank you.
Is that available on the website?
That map?
Yes. Yes, the zoning map is available on the website.
And if you want to see me after the meeting, I've also got a few copies I could hand out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Tonight, we'll be discussing three new overlay districts, and as I said, those are the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District, the Central Business Historic Overlay District, and the Tower Park Historic Overlay District. The city currently has one overlay district, which is the Residential Cluster Development Overlay District. So what is an overlay district? Overlay zoning districts are a regulatory tool that creates a special zoning district placed over and on top of the existing base zoning districts, which imposes additional requirements beyond those in the base underlying zone.
Alisa, we're not hearing you. Sorry about that. I didn't...
Put it right up against you, I guess that...
Thank you.
This is my first experience with these microphones, so I don't know.
Is that better? How about that?
There we go.
Can you get back one more, tell me what you said, or this, because I didn't want to hear it.
Okay, certainly. And again, I mean, hopefully with the news system, y'all can hear me fine, but just raise your hand if you can't.
Okay, thanks.
Tonight, we'll be discussing three new overlay historic, three new overlay districts. Those are the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District, the Central Business District Historic Overlay District, and Overlay District for the Tower Park area. The city currently has one overlay district, which is the Residential Cluster Development Overlay District. So what is an overlay zoning district? It is a tool that creates a special zoning district that's placed on top of the existing base zones. And so what you saw on the previous map were those base zones. An overlay district can be, have the same boundaries as the underlying district, or it can overlay several zoning districts. Regulations imposed by the overlay district are designed to protect specific resources or to regulate development in one or more special areas. On a traditional zoning map, overlay districts are often shown in hash marks, like you see on the screen, and that's just simply to let the viewer know that there are additional regulations that they need to find. So does the planning commission, before we start this whole long discussion about overlay districts, have any questions about what they are, the purpose of them, and how they're used? I feel like y'all are all the way over there.
They are.
So the first overlay district that we will discuss is the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay Zoning District. We've been having conversations with community members throughout this zoning ordinance update process, and we've heard from many people how special Fort Thomas Avenue is, especially those residential areas out between and north and south of downtown and Midway. Consequently, we drafted the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay Zoning District. As the intent subsection of this draft ordinance says, the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay Zoning So anyway, the intent for this new zoning overlay district really is to protect the special character of Fort Thomas Avenue in terms of its character and its charm and the significant place it holds within the community. The proposed overlay zoning district overlays parcels that are currently zoned R1B, R1C, and R3, and the uses that it applies to are single-family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, and residential care facilities for persons with disabilities. Therefore, if a parcel is zoned R3, which is the multifamily district that we've talked about previously, and currently has a multifamily building sitting on top of it, and that means three or more units, then the parcel would not be subject to these regulations. So it's just homes, duplexes, and residential care facilities. The proposed zoning district encompasses many of the residential parcels along north and south Fort Thomas Avenue, and starting, I'm going to have several maps that show you where it is. So to the north, it stretches roughly from Johnson Elementary all the way down to City It skips downtown, it picks back up at Schalefonte Place, all the way down to Bivouac Avenue. On South Fort Thomas, it goes from Bivouac to the Cincinnati Bell Building, and then the district continues south of the Midway area and terminates at US 27. Does that give y'all an idea of where we're talking about? Okay.
That is on Fort Thomas Avenue.
I'm sorry, sir?
From Johnson Elementary?
Sir, we can't, we can't hear you at all, so...
Okay, I'm sorry. So you said from Johnson Elementary?
Tom, if we could, hang on. What we're going to do, there won't be specific times when everybody can ask questions. If you could just hold it until we get to that point. Thank you.
And I plan to stop after the discussion of this district, so I'm not going to keep talking for an hour, I promise.
I guess the only question I had was, so what was your rationale for setting the limits of the district?
So it was for, because of the people that we talked to, what was really important were those single-family homes versus those things in the R3, the multifamily in the R3. What we talked about as being important in the R3 was not having parking in the front yard of those R3 multifamily dwellings, and so that will be handled separately. And because the nature of those R3 developments are so very different than the single-family homes and the duplexes, it would be hard to set standards that would apply to both.
Right, I was thinking more of the geographic limits.
Oh, the geographic limits. So the idea being that for most of that length of the road, the parcels are narrow in width, and therefore the character of the street is defined by all those houses being in a line up and down. North of Johnson Elementary, the parcels get larger, and the houses tend to be set further back. There's also a greater diversity in architectural styles. One of the questions I'm going to ask at the end of this is, though, do we have the right geographic boundaries? If not, we certainly can change it, and this is not, you know, as we've talked about before, we're in Phase 2. This is a conversation. If we want to go further north or further south or cut a portion out, we can do that, but that is the rationale for why those boundaries were set. So only some of the changes to these residential properties will be subject to these regulations. All new construction, so if it's a brand-new house, has to meet the standards. And substantial additions. In this case, substantial additions mean any alteration to the front of the residential property or any alteration to the side of the property that is visible for Thomas Avenue. So this question may be a bit premature until we talk more about what's being regulated, but is the intent of the district to, because the intent of the district really is to retain the existing character of Fort Thomas Avenue in terms of its residential nature, should be regulating any other alterations on a property? And again, this may be a bit premature, you may want to talk about it after we talk about it, but think about that. Is this all we want to regulate? New construction and additions that can be seen from Fort Thomas Avenue in order to meet the intent of the district, which is protecting the character of Fort Thomas Avenue? Do you want to talk about it now or talk about it a little bit more later? Let's move on. So the district regulates the setback of the principal dwelling unit or the home, building height, garage orientation, carport placement, roof design, building orientation, porches, and facade design. These are the site and design elements that specifically help to define the residential character of Fort Thomas Avenue. And as we move through the presentation, think about whether or not these are the correct elements, or if other things should be added, or some of these should be deleted. Again, the intent behind this district is to protect what you see on the screen, those lovely homes and the character of the district. So are we regulating the right things? That's the fundamental question. And if you don't like how we're regulating, then we can come up with another way, but fundamentally, at this stage, should be, are these the right things to think about in terms of standards? So the text also provides guidance, by meaning we're expressing a preference for certain things, and these tend to be statements that are should statements. And in this situation, we are saying that detached garages should be the preferred type of garage, but we're not mandating it, and that there should be a raised foundation and entries for new homes. But again, this is just guidance, just says should. So for the front setback, new construction and additions to the front of homes along Fort Thomas Avenue will be required to have a front setback within three feet of the average setback of all homes within 300 feet. This requirement will prevent homes from being located too far back on a lot and maintain the existing predominant setback. We're also regulating building height. The building height may not exceed the average height of the principal structures on lots within 300 feet on each side of the lot that's under review. So keep in mind, that means that homes can be shorter, and they just can't exceed the, they just can't be taller, they can't exceed the average. So in terms of garage placement on the lot, garage placement really does, is a key element to defining character. The portion of North Thomas Avenue with... The portion of north Thomas Avenue with this portion here would look very different if all of those homes had front-facing garages instead of porches. And as I've said, the text expresses a preference for detached garages, but it does require that if you have one, it has to be located to the rear of the dwelling. Along Fort Thomas Avenue, street-facing garages are prohibited except for below-grade single-car garages, which are located in the basement or below the first floor of the dwelling. Notice that I said a single-car garage is permissible. From my review of typical homes in Fort Thomas, most often, these below-grade garages are single cars. There are a few that are two-car garages. I refrain, refrain from placing a maximum on the widths of the garage door of the single-car garage doors so to have a little bit of flexibility, because there is a range in some of those. But a maximum width of the garage door could be added if you, to some desire. Attached side-loaded garages are permitted, provided they don't protrude in front of the habitable portion of the home. Rear-loaded detached garages are permissible. Do you have any concerns about either the development standards we talked about, which are the setback and the building height and garage placement?
How is the 300 feet defined?
It's a, it's defined as 300 feet on each side of the lot.
Of the lot line?
Of the lot line, correct.
We currently do that with some other aspects for front setbacks as well. We've had several porch additions that we regulate the same way from that point, 300 feet in the middle.
Yeah, I'm just looking through what's the center of the lot line?
No, not the lot line.
I usually, I traditionally go on from the lot.
Yeah.
Closest one.
I have a question about the, the height restriction.
Sure.
Is there a reason we want the average height rather than the maximum height of any of the other surrounding buildings? I mean, it seems like the average height might limit somebody to a one-story when there may be two-story buildings, you know, within 300 feet on either side.
So it really is a, is a preference, right? We were, again, we are only regulating, you can't be too high, can't be too... There are some ordinances, these are, this is called a residential contextual conservation district in most places. And so a lot of them will actually say things like, you have to be at the average, or you have to, or they only think, you can only have a two-story home. In this particular case, I was trying to just really keep from having an odd tooth that was, that was too tall. If you wanted to say, you know, if you wanted to, if you think it's a standard that we need to regulate, because that's the first fundamental question. Building height may not be something that you think is important in terms of defining character, but we certainly can regulate it any number of different ways.
We already have a height restriction.
You do.
So... I guess I would be against having the height restriction at all, or if we felt we needed it, I would, I guess my recommendation would be that we would allow up to the maximum height of the buildings that are, you know, existing within the 300 feet, if that's what we want to use.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of had the same feeling, is that if the start with the heights already defined with underlying zoning district, do we need to overlay specifically to address height? I guess is my question. And I would be hesitant to limit anybody that wanted to build a two-floor home or build an addition on a single-floor home from prohibiting that just because of the adjacency of what's there today, because, you know, over time, it evolves.
Right.
So I would hesitate, be hesitant to do that. The other thing that I, that I noted when I was reading it was the discussion about the first-floor elevation. I think you had in there, was it 18 inches? Something like that above grade?
That's a "should."
A "should."
It's not a "must."
Because that violates ADA. If somebody wanted to have a handicap access from the street without a scoop, without a step into the house, if it's 18 feet, that hits less than 90 inches.
No, no, so if it's within 18 feet of the front lot line,
Right.
they should have a raised entry in order to provide privacy. That's a, that's an urban design standard.
I understand that it violates ADA.
It does, that's very true.
No, I don't think we should require that or suggest that.
It doesn't, the ADA doesn't, doesn't include single-family homes. I mean, if someone has an aged parent, they might want to add something, but yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't violate.
It doesn't violate it per se, in terms of the legal standard, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that, you know, all homes should not be able to have a level entry. If you want to have a level entry, and most, the American Planning Association really is advocating that pretty much all new homes have a level entry. That is, that meets the ADA. And so if we're suggesting that all new homes should not have that, I have wrong with that idea. The ability to have, I'm not saying we're forcing people to have it. I'm just saying that if you want the ability to have a level entry, you should be able to do that.
You already should.
Right. Well, we're saying you should have something that theoretically is not handicap accessible.
So I'll tell you why I put it there. If you go up and down Fort Thomas Avenue, many of them have raised porches and raised entrances and...
Entrances.
Entrances, thank you. Apparently, I can't talk. And so it is a defining characteristic of many of the homes that you have. And if you will look at these conservation overlays in many communities, they actually put "shall." And I just couldn't do it, because we all are going to be old and need to get in our houses. It also severely restricts design if you say it has to have a raised entry.
Well, we're trying to keep the look, and that's the look.
It is the look.
If you wanted to have a handicap entrance, it could be in the back, because the back, you can do anything you want.
Well, if it's from the street, the primary entrance from the street is supposed to be handicap accessible. We're not supposed to have the porch around.
Right. That's not, that's public, not private.
Yeah. But if the primary entry to the home, which...
Then it's not fitting, it's not fitting the look.
I understand that. This doesn't have anything to do with the status. This is, this is being able to use a wheelchair with a less than a 5% grade. That's the idea, and an adequate rule.
What does "should" mean legally in that? Does that mean if you don't, you're going to have to come and get a...
It means nothing.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, but I, I agree with, with Dave that if, if it's actually, you know, recommending or saying it should violate ADA.
But, I mean, Jerry's correct. ADA does not handle, does not regulate.
I, I understand all of that, but "should" depends on the board you're in front of.
We will have in the, the front of the code, the meaning of "may" and "should" and "shall." And there are some communities who say it's important enough to us to signal what we think, what we value and what defines character, that we're putting "should" in there just to give you an understanding of what we value and an inkling of what we think it should look like. But it is not so important to us that we have made it a "shall." So it is very much a guidance, it's, think about it as a guideline, because that's what it is. For the homeowner who is doing this themselves, or for a homeowner who is hiring an architect, they pick it up and they say, okay, the community really understands that a raised entry is a defining feature along Fort Thomas Avenue, and if we can make it work, we will. But in no way is it legally binding. And as I said, these terms will all be defined in the...
Should we do an analysis of how many homes actually have porches within the, within the proposed overlay?
So interestingly enough, and we will get to that in a minute, and we'll get to the porch discussion in a second, because I actually did go through them. But right now, if we could just limit the discussion to okay with those building standards of, and the garage placement. And I don't mean to push off Dave, I promise you, we will get there. So what do we think about height? Do we want to regulate it or just leave it up to the underlying district?
Could you define, how do we define height? Like, you're going to have within 300 feet some flat-roofed two-families and some steep roofs. Is it the average height of, and we have some complicated roof designs, too. So how, how do we define that?
By definition, it's to the peak. I know some ordinances will go to the average of the roof line, but it's to the peak and it's the average, the average grade below. So if you have a walkout, it's the average grade of, of the bottom to the peak. That's the way, I believe that's our definition. And I think there is references to, once again, other ordinances that, that have the average of the roof line, but ours is the average grade at the bottom to the peak.
Okay, the reason I ask is later in this discussion, we're going to talk about roof lines, and we're requiring a minimum 612 roof, which really gives you a tall roof, and it could really hamper, you know, some decent design by, yeah, I'm not a fan of the roof line, but this further complicates if we go to the peak of the roof and not the average height of a, of a...
I mean, we could, I don't love if there's any consideration for modifying that definition later on to the average height. I don't...
I would recommend that you do so, because if you don't, it produces squatty buildings. But we haven't gotten to definitions yet.
Right, I agree. That's our current definition.
That's your, that's your...
There are other ordinances that have that average roof height, so...
But measuring it to the peak does inevitably produce squatty roofs. I think we should...
Well, I guess similarly, did you do an inventory, how many houses are single-story versus two-story in the, in the district?
So what I did look at was the number of flat roofs, because I was surprised by them. And there were at least a dozen from Johnson Elementary all the way down to US 27. So I think what I'm hearing now is that you're not comfortable with having, with regulating building height differently than the underlying district.
That would be my opinion. That's a high view.
Okay, so I'm going to pull that out, but Pam, if you feel strongly about it, we can talk about it again in page three. Is that okay? Any concern about the garage placement?
I guess the only thing, I mean, this is just a personal preference. If you're going to have a, a garage below grade with a driveway going below grade at the front of the house, aesthetically, I don't know that that's better than if you had an attached garage at grade facing the street with the driveway at grade, honestly. To me visually, I don't know that it really is preferable.
So what's the difference is, and you're, and this is unique. I mean, I've worked in a lot of communities all over the country, and I truthfully had never seen that until I came to the Cincinnati area, era. I truly believe that when you put it at grade, it breaks up the facade, and so it does dramatically change the character of the house versus having it below grade where it does not.
The finished floor of that house on the left was a very different if it was a porch. Understood that you also wouldn't have an exposed foundation wall with a garage door in it. Potentially.
But you will notice that I limited it to single-car, because again, you are attempting to not have so much of the below-grade as a garage door. I included that because there are, I didn't count them, but there are an enormous number like this up and down Fort Thomas Avenue and all over your community. And to simply say that you can't do that anymore, did not seem appropriate to me.
I'm just saying, I don't see that being preferable to allowing it. In addition, with an attached garage at grade is on the single-bay garage, you know, and with the driveway grade, I don't, I don't see visually, I don't think it's a, to me, it's not a significant difference.
I think it is, because it doesn't break up the front facade of the first floor, Pam.
There's a house they just built on Highland Avenue that the garage is on the first level. It's down by Newman. Do you know which one I'm talking about? They tore down a little house and they built a skinny house in there, and they put the garage at the very front, and it's right at grade, it's not below grade, it's straight in. It does not really fit the character. It's a nice house, it's really nice, but it doesn't fit. And Highland Avenue is not what we're looking at, but if you put that up on north Fort Thomas or south Fort Thomas, I don't think it would fit that.
Yeah, I mean, the other issue I've seen at several houses in Fort Thomas, when you have a below grade, not necessarily these, because the driveway's pitching towards the street, but when you have the driveway pitching back to the house, and that inevitably, that drain clogs, and then it floods the garage, and then the garage door rots. And people, I've seen people try to brick that up, put sandbags in the driveways, all those types of things. And I just hate to impose that on a homeowner, depending on the topography of their individual lot, versus the, the ability to have a driveway that would actually drain away from the home.
So we will get to the end of this and talk about how deviations happen. Because again, the end of this presentation. Because no matter how much I write up and down Fort Thomas Avenue and every other street in your community, there is going to be something that I miss in terms of a site constraint. We, we just can't think of it all, and which is why I'm a firm believer in flexibility. You will probably, if you had another consultant sitting here, you would not have as much flexibility built in as I am building into your ordinance, because that's what I think is important in a built-out community. Obviously, if I am wrong, you can tell me. But you will, at the end of this, there is a, a situation where if you do have a site constraint, you can go in front of the design review board and get some waivers. And again, you'll notice I'm not saying you go to the BZA, you're not going to the Board of Adjustment, because getting a variance, rising to the level of, of a variance is a very, very hard standard to meet. But again, we are putting design standards on single-family homes, and we need to give them some flexibility. And so there will be some circumstances where there's some site constraints and existing building constraints that we haven't thought about, and the design review board will have the authority to make some deviations.
And I guess that's just an overarching question I have, not necessarily specific to this, but to the, the inclusion of, do we know how many structures are actually affected by this overlay?
Oh, I haven't counted them, I guess I could, but...
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is, how is that number in terms of the DRV's potential oversight compared to the existing structures that they're purviewing is? I mean, is it probably doubling the amount of structures potentially that they would have to review with the modification?
Well, how many building permits for single-family homes do you get a year? Just not even, I mean, not including where...
For single-family homes, we get, on average, any more side.
Well, I mean, for an alteration.
For alterations, I mean, I'll say that along Fort Thomas Avenue, I don't think we've had a significant number.
I don't think there's a vacant lot on north Fort Thomas Avenue.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, I don't know.
So the only way this would apply is if someone tore down a building to build a new one, which probably would happen.
Well, it would apply for an addition.
Or apply for addition, but a second...
Yeah, but we're talking about, okay. Talking about garages right now, then.
So if it was an addition in the front, that's why, tangent to that.
I'm, I'm just thinking about workload for them, that's all, is, is, is this a burden on them, is all, I guess, I'm asking.
Yeah, and we've talked to the design review board a little bit about some of the administrative latitude that we should or could take. The current DRV language actually allows us a lot more latitude than we take. And I think if, if we see that burden coming on, we can take some, some of that burden off, I think. You know, minor revisions, minor changes administratively with the current language. With this language, I'm not sure how much is administrative, off the top of my head, but... Without one of the DRV, is there, if there's some administrative, Elisa, is there some administrative latitude here?
Right now, the way it's currently structured, if they meet all the standards, you just approve it, you being the zoning administrator. And then any deviations at all would go toward the design review board. If we want to build in some administrative deviations, I can do that.
Didn't we do that with your original, we had some discussions about the single-family homes outside of, outside of these areas, major modifications to...
Yes, so, yes, so there is already a waiver
Right.
for everything that, that does give you some flexibility. But those are for numbers, right? Those are, it has to be a discreet number, like 10% of the front setback or that kind of thing. So yes, you could do a setback, if you decided to do building height, you could do that, but we're not regulating building height. But, you know, the placement of the garage, all of those kinds of things are more design-oriented, and in my opinion, should go to the design review board, because there's a whole lot of discretion there versus, you know, 12 feet, 13 feet for a front setback. But you would have the ability to issue a waiver for the setback.
But as I was saying, I, I don't know that there is this, you know, along north Fort Thomas Avenue or south Fort Thomas Avenue, the entire avenue, I don't know that we've had a significant amount of applications, you know, in general, for additions or teardowns, replacements, or anything like that. I wouldn't, I, I think it's similar to the discussion we had for regulating the other commercial districts through our design review board for some design standards. My initial reaction is there's, there's not, it's not so much that I don't think our design review board can handle it, or wouldn't, wouldn't be interested in.
Sorry, reader, Jack.
No, that's what this whole...
That's a very good question. Kind of an overarching thing of...
No, it's, like I said, we've had that discussion. No, it's, like I said, we've had that discussion.
All right, so we're okay, what do we want to do about the front-loading, below-grade garages?
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with them. I guess all I'm saying is I would feel comfortable with an at-grade garage door. I know some of the other folks don't, but I would feel comfortable with that as an addition.
Do we want to allow single-car front-loading garages on Fort Thomas Avenue?
I don't think so.
All right, I'm going to leave the language the way it is. We can continue this discussion, you know, in phase three.
I guess one other question, not directly that topic, but are we regulating driveways or parking pads or anything like that in the grand areas?
So you currently have language that I don't remember what it is.
Uh, no more than one-third of the area associated with the front yard for parking. And then I think we wanted to bear down on the R3s, as Elisa mentioned at the very beginning, that they can't just slap the parking lot in front. We have a lot of nice front yards in some of those R3 areas, and we kind of didn't want them to change that. But it's a third.
And Frank counted all the parcels and it's 180 that would be in this district. Thank you, Frank.
It's 180 that are affected because some of these are not, are the more than two...
Thank you. So still talking about parking, no metal carports can be visible from Fort Thomas Avenue, and portico chair are acceptable.
So how are we defining what's visible? So if it's in the rear of the house, then you can see it from the street if you look down the drive, is it visible?
So if it's obviously front-on, it's visible. And if you are on a corner, what happens on the corner, and if it's, as long as you can't see it from the front yard, is not applicable. But for example, if they do an addition to the side that is significant enough that you can see it, then yes, that would be regulated. So it will be a judgment call from the zoning administrator.
Do we want to say metal or do we just want to say carpetboard?
Um, metal carports. Oh, would you, I don't know, do you want to...
Because I've seen fabric carports, I'm just saying.
Do y'all want to regulate all of them?
Yeah, because what happens if someone has a nice wooden carport, like a garage with a nice roof, with chingles on it?
Well, you're talking about a standalone structure, correct?
Or it can be attached to the house. I mean, we've all seen metal carports that are attached to the house. I specifically did metal because those are the ones that tend to be more flimsy and less well-cared-for.
You're not, are you talking about a portable carport?
No, I'm not, but there are places in Cincinnati that do have...
There are places in Fort Thomas that I've seen.
That have portable carports, and truthfully, I had not thought about that, should we regulate those?
That's what I initially thought that you were talking about.
Should we regulate portable?
Are they regulated now?
I don't get a lot of requests for them, so honestly, I don't think I've ever been asked for somebody to put one in their yard.
I know there was one across from Johnson for a long time.
So I'd say carports in garages, if they are not physically, I think we have a regulation that if they can be attached, they can be in a side yard. I've never had a request for a metal carport in my tenure. So I, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know if that would be permitted in the rear yard. I don't know why it wouldn't, if in a rear yard. On a side yard, I think it could be, if it was attached and met the setbacks, I don't think I could stop it if it was physically attached to the main structure.
I mean, I've seen some that weren't attached.
I mean, if they're out there, they were either before me or put up without permit.
So it's regulated, so it is permitted?
I would say if it was attached in a side yard, met setback...
It's not attached, it could be anchored, but not attached.
So if it's not attached, we have language in there that says that a carport, and I think it falls under the same language as garage, that it has to be attached if it's in a side yard. Rear yard, it's not regulated at all, but it says it has to be attached if it's in a side yard.
Well, and I guess that's what I was getting at, if it's in a rear yard and it's still visible, I mean, what defines visible? If you're allowed to have a freestanding carport in your backyard?
Well, we could make the language easier and just say it has to be located behind the dwelling, in which case it can't be visible. How's that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a potential available with it, I'm just saying if you're standing in the driveway, you could see it from the sidewalk, is all I'm saying, if it's in the rear of the house.
We'll change it to behind the principal dwelling.
And I guess all I would say is, is it carports or is it just metal carports? Because I've seen aluminum, or yeah, I've seen fiberglass carports with, you know, composite fabric roofs. I mean, you know, I don't know if I would define the material necessarily. Yeah, or maybe unenclosed carport, I don't know.
Well, Pam's point's well taken, I mean, mid-century modern homes had carports that were attached that were architecturally significant to the dwelling, and I don't know that we necessarily want to get rid of those. And you do have a few mid-century modern along Fort Thomas, along Fort Thomas Avenue. I was surprised how many of them actually.
Are those freestanding or attached?
They're attached.
Do we want to say no freestanding carports visible from...
Okay, we can do that. Got it.
If you could build three feet from the existing structure, disconnect a little hood that walks over the doors.
People do that all the time. It's not structurally attached.
Is that what we want? Look, maybe is what we're talking about.
So moving on to roofs, as we started talking about a minute ago, homes must have sloped roofs. So this does prohibit flat-roof dwellings. Variations in roof panes are recommended, so again, this is a should, to break up the large roof mass through dormers, gables, and changes in the elevation. The main roofs must have a pitch between 612 and 1212. And shed roofs are only allowed if they are attached to the wall of the home. So when we started having discussions about this district, the thought process was that, say, a 412 really isn't defiant, really does not meet the character of the homes that you see along Fort Thomas Avenue. And a 412 would be more, you know, split-level 1970s sort of construction. And because this is so specific, we will include graphics like this in the code so that it's helpful to the person who's reading it. But this is a, as Jerry was pointing out, this is a significant design element to someone's home. So I think what we need to think long and hard about whether or not it's important enough to us to regulate it.
I grew up up and down the avenue quite a few times, and, you know, we might have half of them are at 612 to 1212. But in the south end, we have a bunch of houses, bungalows with probably 412 roofs. We've got a number of two families with flat roofs. It just, and you were talking about mid-century modern, I mean, those are all flat or low, and we're saying you can't have those, or you can't add to them. If you want to add on to a mid-century modern house, you have to have an eight, a 612 roof, I mean...
Or go to the one.
I just thought this was way too constricted. If we had, if 90% of our houses looked the same, then yeah, I'd think this would be appropriate. But we have an awful lot of variation in architecture that's on that.
You do, you have homes from the 1920s all the way to today. It's an incredible...
I found the whole thing...
I'm sorry?
I found the whole thing way too restrictive. That's just me, but...
I, like I said, this is a key issue in terms, is it important enough to regulate it, given the constraint that it is going to put on home construction?
I guess, I have another question for you, are we going to regulate any similar panel placement of roofs?
We will get to that, yeah, in next, probably next month, in fact.
Because that can affect your inclination of your roof angle.
Oh, it can. So just find a middle...
I guess I would agree with Jerry, I think there's just too many variables and too many scenarios that, to me, it's not...
It's not worth it.
It's not worth it to me.
So I get, I get the, in terms of defining the pitch, do you want to prohibit flat roofs? Because that is vastly different.
If there's a mid-century modern flat house now, I'm not going to tell them you can't do something with their home.
No, no.
It can always go to the DRV.
It can always go to the DRV. And that would definitely be a building constraint by which they would, nobody is going to make them put a pitched roof on in addition to a flat-roofed house.
Yeah, I mean, I just look at the garages that were done of an Alexander Circle that are all flat roofs, not flat roof, but flat slab that are attached to the rear of those homes, which, you know, it is what it is, but...
But again, those are all, that's for the rear, we don't care.
Well, you can see them off the street.
You can, you know. So it seems like we want to get rid of the pitch, at least, what do we want to do about flat roofs?
With new construction, I don't think we should have flat roofs.
All right, we can, we can put that as well, we can just say...
Because now you already have them, so they would seem to be grandfathered in, you wouldn't want them to change it.
If they're there, then that's a character of the neighborhood, though, too. So I, I don't know why we would restrict a new house from putting in the same way.
No, I see.
The other issue you have...
Because you're trying to make it look, trying to come back to the historic look.
Right, I mean, the other issue now, you have more and more houses that are being added with rooftop deck integrated into the roof. Do we regulate that today?
That's not, to me, that's not...
From a residential perspective, I mean, I can't say I issued any of those, but I would say if it meets the height, and it has all the safety, safety there, I don't think it would be regulated in a residential aspect. You know, in our commercial district, sets...
So that wouldn't necessarily have a pitched roof underneath of the building, it would for drainage purposes, but if you had a deck integrated into your addition under roof, how do you deal with that in this scenario? Unless that's something that automatically would just go to the DRV?
It would just go to the DRV. But again, I mean, is it so important to us that we actually say no flat roofs? I do not think it is important enough for the 612 or the 1212 to do that. That's just too restrictive. But there are many, many communities who do use that standard. You would not be alone in doing so. But do we want to do flat roofs? And we don't have to make that decision right now, but what's the feeling?
Well, I would like to see somebody going, this area we're talking about, take 10 houses out and build all the flat roof designs. The character is not there to me. I don't like the century modern. I'm sorry. And it doesn't make sense with snow anymore.
So you're leaning towards...
I would want the guy next door to me to build one, and the character, and everyone's all pitched roofs at some time.
All right, so then let's leave it as new construction, new home, not addition, that kind of thing, no flat roof. How's that? Okay, and again, phase three, if we're still having a lot of discomfort, we can do something else. Okay, so here's another hard one, porches. So porches are a defining feature of a home and a street. Many of the homes along Fort Thomas Avenue have porches, but not all of them. You have a fair number of Dutch colonial revival homes that have an enormous amount of architectural features on the front, and they cover stoop, but they don't have a porch like you see here. As we just talked about, plus the homes along Fort Thomas Avenue were constructed over several decades and represent an incredible number of architectural styles from Johnson Elementary all the way down to US 27, which is why porches are not required for all new homes. They're only required as it's currently drafted if the homes on either side of you, two on either side, have a porch. And there's a minimum depth of four feet. I particularly used four feet instead of six or eight. Most architects or urban design professionals will tell you that you really can't sit on a four-foot porch, you can't do it. However, again, I was trying to be less restrictive. So if we think porches are important, given that the two homes on either side have a porch, that's the first question. And if so, then we'll deal with the depth.
Are you saying that all four houses, two on each side have porches? Or any of the four, or how, I don't understand the wording on that.
So I'm just going to read it to you as it's currently drafted. Where a new construction or addition to the front of an existing principal building is proposed, such principal new building shall have a front porch if porches are present on the majority of the four homes, two on either side of the dwelling under review. So it'd be a mod, you know, so then what, the next question becomes, what happens if it's only two of the four? Because that's not a majority. I mean, this is a tough question. I mean, I think we all have this, I had this vision until I started walking up and down the street, that, you know, 90% of the houses had these porches, but they don't. There's, like I said, there's a fair number of Dutch colonial revivals, as well as all the other styles we've talked about. And you don't realize that those Dutch colonials don't have a porch because there's so much prominent architectural features on the front. It all seems to have, you know, the innate fussiness that you see with these, but they don't have them. So again, this is another thing, it is clearly what most people think is along Fort Thomas Avenue when you talk to people. But it is not indeed the case. So what do we, what do we...
Four feet by four feet, you're on, just right from the front door?
So that, no, that would be, if it's uncovered, that would be a stoop definitionally.
But if it's covered...
But if it's covered, then it would be a porch, yes. Now, we...
I mean, if you had something coming out of that door.
Yes, if it's covered. Now, there are communities...
But you don't, you can't, wouldn't design on a cell on it, probably.
It's not a porch in the tree.
That's not a sitting porch.
Yeah, you're going up and into door.
Right. But if it doesn't have a roof, it's a stoop definitionally. But if it is four feet by four feet and it has a roof over it, it's a porch.
This is one of those things where, could you have it as a should and not a should?
Yes, of course.
That's the way, I mean, I think there is merit in having a porch, but I would be hesitant to think that every single one of, of one of those 180 parcels has to have a porch. Especially if, you know, if you're giving the caveat, it could be a four-by-four porch. And in the traditional sense, that's not a porch.
But surprisingly enough, I mean, some of these are tiny. Look at the one on the, the second from the right.
That's more than four feet by four feet.
It may or may not be, I mean, it's just, it's basically, but you have many that's just the width of the, slightly more than the width of the front door. Your perception is it's a porch until you really start looking at it. And I don't, the house is to the right, I even question whether or not that porch is original.
It's not.
I don't think it is. So I think we can add it, we can make it a should, and we'll say it should be a minimum of four feet, and we'll go from there. All right, this one's important, the next one. If you have an existing front porch, you can't scrape it in, and you can't glass it in. And if it's already glazed in or screened in, you can maintain it. When you start, when you start glassing these in and screening them in, that's a huge change to the character of the street. So this is one of the places where I'm going to say, we need to regulate it. If you just, if you choose to do otherwise, I understand and I'll do that. But my urban design sense says you don't allow these things to be enclosed.
What if they want to do a partial enclosure, so you have a porch across the whole front, front of the house, can you close half of it?
I would say no, because again, what happens when you enclose a porch like that? So these porches that you see on the screen here, there's an openness and airiness to it. And then when you start enclosing it, even if it's part of it, you bring the habitable portion of the house closer to the street, and you suddenly do away with that open airiness because you've enclosed it. Now, if you want me to put in language that says 50% of it can be enclosed because you don't, you won't be closing off the entire front, I can do that.
I mean, I think that house there, the second from the right, I don't, I don't think, I think that was originally an open porch.
I think it was too. I think it was too.
And I don't have a problem with that. I don't, so, I mean, I think that 50% is reusable. I personally don't have a problem with it. Like, the other one with the full frontage that was added to that house, and if you can plate that entire frontage, it's kind of cool, then it's not a porch, essentially, it's a sunroom on the front.
Mostly it's trying to be, they're trying to be a sunroom on the front.
Some ordinances allow the front porch to encroach into the front yard. Do we, do we define the front yard as being the face of the building proper? I mean, when you, if you enclosed it, now it's living interior space, and we're actually decreasing the front yard if in fact we defined it that way.
So the definition of a porch that's... So the definition of a porch that's regulated, the front setback, is if the porch is more than 20% the width of the structure and more than six foot from the front, then it becomes the front setback. If it's more than those parameters, then it becomes the front setback. My initial reaction would be, as it stands, and Alisa, correct me if I'm wrong, or if you, you disagree, but my initial reaction would be that if you have a full front porch, that it could be enclosed currently without any regulation whatsoever, no board of adjustment action or, or anything like that. And I would happen to, I, I happen to agree with Alisa, the character, I think, definitely changes if you enclose those front porches. Once again, whether it's 50% or something, I, I feel that that's an important aspect of the character of the houses. If you look at the houses, most notably for me, if I'm coming from south, the intersection of South Fort Thomas and South Grand, and coming toward Bivouac on that right side, those houses right there all have big, large front porches, yeah, big, large front porches, and if you enclose those, I think it would definitely change the character there.
And remember, what we're trying to do is we're trying to keep a character, trying to keep a historic look, and that's not, that's an modern look.
All right. So where are we landing with this? Keep the language as it is, or allowing 50% of it to be filled in?
No.
I'm going to be either way.
All right, let's keep it the way it is. Again, we can continue discussion later.
And they can always appeal that to the DRB, correct?
They could, yeah, they could. We're coming to the end of this, believe it or not. A minimum of the 15% of the front facade that faces Fort Thomas must have windows, and that's including the entrance doors, would be considered transparent. And the text encourages, meaning it's a should, architectural detailing and windows on all sides of the dwelling, not just the front. So that's a should, because you know, a lot of new houses don't have windows on the side. Now, let's, don't forget that in some cases, the lots are too close together to have windows on the side as a result of the building code, which is another reason to make this a should, but that is a should. So the only hard and fast requirement is 50% of the front facade must be windows and/or entrance doors.
How do you actually measure the 15% Kevin?
From finished floor to finished ceiling.
I, I know, but how do you, how do you actually go out there and say, that is 17%?
So we are actually, as we're part of this, adding to the requirements for a building permit that you have to have a front, front elevation.
With dimensions?
With dimensions, yes. So instead of, that would be the only addition in terms of cost to a homeowner, that they will now have to have a front elevation to get a building permit.
Do you have a, if you have a two-story home and you had an upper-level door, not the primary entrance door, but does that count as well?
So it's the front facade, right? So it's all of those windows and doors?
Well, it says entrance doors is what it says.
Okay, I can change that.
I would say windows and doors.
Okay, I can second that, I can change that.
Maybe more than 15%?
Sure, just have to be at least.
Because he just said, how do you measure if it's 15% or not, it can be more?
It can be more, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a minimum.
It's a minimum, that's the way it's currently drafted, it's a minimum, but I just didn't put all the words on the screen.
Well, it just says 15% must be, yeah, it's a minimum of 15%.
Yeah, it's a minimum of 15%.
That's actually...
Yeah, that's what the text says.
Doesn't say that there, though.
No, 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 I just, I just didn't put all the words on the screen. Okay, so I think we've already answered this question, so we've gone through it. But the only outstanding question is, is there anything else besides what we've talked about that we should regulate? Anything else when you, and if you, you don't have to answer that question now, even if you just want to take some time and write up and down Fort Thomas Avenue, think about if there's any other prominent portion of the front of those homes that really does define the character for you. But these are the ones I picked out based on my review of the avenue and many, many years of doing this work.
I mean, if we had issues where the, like I get, going back to the paved parking space in the front, I mean, if we had issues where there's been more than a third of the front yard paved?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we, we've got a lot of 50-foot lots, not so much, not so much here, but we've got a lot of 50-foot lots, and it, it's pretty small, and it, it, you know, based on area, it is a number, so they could give a dimensional variance, and we've had some that are very close, and we've had to scrunch them down a little bit, and it does, you know, on the, on the small side streets, it does impact the, this, the, the parking ability of the, the public parking, you know, if you, if you want to widen your driveway, all of a sudden you're taking away a parking spot, and parking is very valuable, so, so yes, we, we've had quite a few requests actually over the years.
And if I remember right, we prohibit any kind of fencing or walls in the front yard, correct?
Uh, you can do a wall, uh, there, I mean, you could do a hedge, or you could do a wall if it's, you know, based on the grade, if your, if your grade goes up, you could build a retaining wall there, but...
But not an ornament wall, just for the sake of it closing your yard?
Yep.
How about brick versus siding on the front?
Some communities regulate that, but again, you have an enormous number of...
I mean, I see somehow, was there, we're paying a lot of them because they were both brick 50s.
I mean, there are some communities who choose in these conservation overlay districts to regulate materials, but y'all have an incredible number of styles of homes, and I'm not sure that the materials in and of themselves are a defining character of the homes along Fort Thomas Avenue. Okay. So as we've already talked about, once someone requests a building permit, if it meets all the standards, the zoning administrator just approves it, and as I said, they will be required to have a front elevation, and if anyone wants to deviate from those requirements, they can go to the design review board. And all it says is that there are site or building constraints, or, so that, that means they have to say that, right? There's something about the building or the site that's constraining my ability to do this. Or they can say to the design review board, I'm meeting the intent and the standard in an equal or better way, because again, there may be a really creative architect, or there may be someone else, they could find another way to meet our, our intent, and so they'll have that ability to make that argument in front of the design review board as well.
And, and again, so if we, I don't know, so we're going to deal with this separately, but if you had solar panels and you want to put on the front elevation of your house...
That's a discussion...
In a southwest orientation, and that's what you have to do to meet your energy targets, is that going to be prohibited in the overlay district?
No, 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 I, I specifically did not regulate solar panels, I, when I said later, I meant in general for the whole city.
Right, right, but I'm just saying in terms of the architectural character of the house, if you had panels on the front of your house, it is what it is.
It is what it is, and I specifically did not regulate solar panels in this overlay district. I mean, do you want to, I mean, I'd say fund them, I mean, you don't have a whole lot of them, but you do certainly have the opportunity to do it.
The other thing I would say, that, and again, this may be something we deal with separately, that do you want to allow people to put a electric vehicle charger in the driveway, in the front yard?
Wait, do we want to regulate solar panels on the front, on the front of the houses in this overlay district? That's the question.
That's fundamentally...
That's fundamentally the question.
I wouldn't like to see them on the fronts.
What if they're flat to the roof instead of up?
You wouldn't see them, right? There's already one there, you know that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
At the corner of, right by Pyle's Middle School.
I just noticed that.
Yeah, it's been there for quite a while. It's a black roof, and they have black solar panels, so it's really hard to see, but they're there.
There's going to be more.
Well, there will be more, but you, but you can't regulate it right now before the government steps in.
It's a corner of Woodside.
Is it Woodside? I couldn't remember the name, but thank you.
Aren't they developed and some of them are integrated with shingles?
Yes.
They are, they are.
You can't really tell as much as these rays from the, from the existing shingle roof.
Yeah, they wouldn't necessarily have any rays, but you can see them.
In the historic area that we're talking about, I would rather not see that.
But if somebody's got an energy credit and can claim they're going to save that amount of money...
Read that too, if you can put it someplace else other than the front.
That's correct.
Right, if you can, it's worse than the garage.
I do that a lot.
Yeah.
More if they were on a second floor or high, then you wouldn't be as noticeable.
Or a third floor.
Times are not visible from the front.
Yeah, maybe that's something else.
I mean, we can certainly regulate it, but I'm going to, I, I think Dave's correct, I think it's going to be something that's going to be more used, and they have to be on a certain portion of the roof that gets the sun, right? And...
It depends on how your house is...
It's just depends on how your house is oriented and where your trees are. So, I mean, if we want to regulate, that certainly we could, and certainly would be something they could go to the DRB for. I'm hearing that maybe we do unregulate it?
Do we let them put them in their yard?
Well, you've got another thing.
Like the big, the big, we had the television disc at one time.
Right, well, as I said, that's what I was getting with about the chargers in the front yard, same, same idea, it's like, well...
Well, the chargers aren't, the chargers are small.
Well, you know, if you have your charger out next to your lamppost in your front yard, is that okay?
They're pretty small, still.
They don't take up a whole lot of mass, as opposed, as opposed to the, the panel which has mass and is...
You can put them in their yard like you said.
Oh, yeah.
You can get them and put them in the front, and there would be no way they should ever be in the front yard on this area.
Okay.
Well, are they even lit?
Well, in the back.
Have they been lighted?
I know, but you almost can't tell before they do, because how could you even see it unless you look back there?
I sure wouldn't want to be defending it.
Defending what, Tim?
Fighting against solar stuff.
Yeah, I, I am, I am a little hesitant to do this, but we'll put it in there this time.
Can you just put it that it can't be in the front yard?
Yeah, I mean, we can say no, no solar panels in the front yard, and...
Well, we don't have any accessory structure in the front yard, right?
Uh, so, the, the old satellite dishes, actually, you can have a, I think, a two-foot diameter or so?
Eighteen inches by four-foot old ball.
Okay, yeah, there, there's a certain size for, for the dishes, which every once in a while you see one, you don't see them too much anymore. Um, you know, I'm not sure how I would regulate if it came across my desk today, I would, I, I could argue, I think I could argue that it's comparable to a solar, or to a, to a satellite dish, that's the closest language we have, and I, I would probably deny it.
If they put it in the front?
If they put it in the front yard, I would, I would attempt to deny it, I don't know if I have standing to do that, but I would, I would...
I would treat it as an accessory structure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would try to deny it if it's, if it's in the front yard, you know, on the front roof line, I've permitted them, you know, like, but, um, in the front yard, I would, I would probably deny it, whether I have full, full authority to do that, that's another question.
Well, wait, you think basically because of size, they're huge right now?
I'm sorry?
Basically because of size, because they're huge right now. I mean, I don't think you can get a solar panel...
Right, because, yeah.
It is just too big.
Right. Size, and like you said, accessory structures in the front yard, you probably, I could probably make that argument.
I mean, I think that's a bigger overall discussion for the whole city, not just the overlay, but I'm just, since it can, I'll put parts of roofs.
Well, and I'll say that, you know, most, I'll, 100% of the ones that I've issued have been on the roofs, I mean, you don't see them really, I think there was a trend at one point where they were putting a few of them in yards, you know, but you don't see that anymore, they're pretty much going on the roofs.
All right, so I'm going to draft it based on what I've heard, no solar panels on the front, or in the front yard?
I don't know that...
Okay, not in the front yard?
I don't know, I don't know that I would regulate that on the roof.
I, I personally don't know that we want to regulate them from the roof.
Because you're not regulating the roofing material.
Can you make it regulated that it matches some sort, or it blends in some way, just like that one? No one even noticed it, like, he, he just said he didn't notice this, been there for a while.
I don't think, we're, we're not requiring it to match, like, if you wanted a standing c-metal roof, and you have a shingle roof or tile roof, we're not telling you what to do.
Well, we just said we couldn't have a metal carport.
Right, but we're not, we're not regulating the roof material.
We're not regulating the roof materials, you know, we could say that they, I think we can get away with saying they need to be flat, and the dimension that, that it can be raised, as opposed, you know, there's some that are, you know, lay wide on the panel on the roof, and then there's some that do this, I mean, if we can...
I, I would suggest we, I think it's a discussion to have, but I think as far as this particular overlay district, I think it's a bigger topic.
It is a bigger topic, but I mean, I, I, I would tell you definitively, everywhere else in the city, I don't think you should regulate them.
Correct.
If you've got any chance anywhere else in this district.
It's, if you're, yeah, it's in this district.
I, I agree, we're talking, and we're talking about this district, so that's why I was saying, could we make it say that it has matched somehow to the roof line, or somehow to the design, just like that one on Woodside? I mean, it's really not bad looking if you saw it.
I'll say that most, most of the ones that, technology is changing very quickly, and I've spoken to some of the solar people, and, and they are making them purposely to match roof lines better, you know, they're, you don't see the grids anymore, it's just a black panel for the most part, and it's, they're really...
Trying.
Trying to change the aesthetics of them in general, anyway.
All right, so what I'm going to do then is say none in the front yard, and that the solar panels can only be raised X amount from the roof, and that they should match the roof shingles, and...
If they have shingle, they might have.
Oh, I should say the roof, roof materials.
The people who can come in and ask you, Kevin, did they ask you where they could put them on those roofs, or they just did?
No, they, they, everyone that's come in has already been a, a solar company that's applied, and they already have it placed on, on the roof, it's all engineered, it's all already done when I get an application, and they've already analyzed the, you know, where the sun is and the orientation and everything else.
At least they have to be before they...
They don't even ask, no.
Or they just put them up?
Well, no, they, they get a permit, they have to get a permit for it.
That's what I'm saying.
They, they do have to get a permit, but they are, it's already planned, it's already engineered and planned.
We always require an engineer to certify that, that the roof, existing wood, or structure would hold the weight of that.
Absolutely.
But if you see one, it's really ugly, you do that, oh, that's really ugly.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can, yeah, if it's on the front, and, and once again, most of them, the one in the front of the houses have been, and, and that's the first thing I look at, you know, it, ah, it's on the front, you know, but, like I said, they are, they are getting better aesthetically.
All right, so that's what I'll do, and then when we come back again in the next phase, we can decide, we'll look and see, you know, did I meet your intent, and does the language really limit and define what someone is able to do? So those are the two things we'll look at. So at this point, if it's okay with, I'm sorry...
The only other question I have is the geographic limits, again, unless you were going to get to that.
Um, I was, so, yeah, so how do you, are you, do you want to put the maps back up?
I can, I guess. I guess my only, my only question is, so where exactly at Johnson are you stopping?
I'll show it to you.
Is it South Gate, or I wasn't sure exactly, I couldn't hardly see from the map.
Oh, okay, let me just put it back up. So it is...
Daisy.
What's that road?
Hartway.
Hartway.
Hartway, yeah, from Hartway all the way down to City Hall Building.
I mean, I, I guess the character that, to me, anyway, the character of the houses on Fort Thomas going even all the way up almost to even to Rosford, or even at Covert Run to some degree, you know, the ages of the houses are more or less the same, there might be a little bit more setback potentially, but...
There's more setback in the lots and wider.
The lots are wider, but, you know, I, I, I don't, I would, I guess I wouldn't have a problem if it was extended further north, but I'm not saying that it has to be extended further.
I have, whatever y'all want to do, that was my rationale.
Because there are some architecturally significant houses in that stretch, but I don't have... Because there are some architecturally significant houses in that stretch, but I don't have...
So how far north do you want to go?
And does anybody else have any thoughts about that?
No, I agree with you, because there's some beautiful, I don't know, right past there.
But, but keep in mind, I'm happy to go north, I'm just saying... Okay, so, I'm sorry, Pam, what do you...
Maybe just to Rossford, because when you pass Rossford, it may do start getting larger, the lots start getting...
Right, and you start getting more temporary houses.
You do get some of that.
And that's Rossford, okay. All right, we'll go that far north. And we'll make Frank count the number of homes between.
We have another 30 or 50 houses or 40 houses.
But the only one's at France.
Yes, only one's at France.
Oh, it is close, it's not Rossford, it's, uh...
What is it?
Rossford.
It's Rossford.
Yeah, it's not really just the other side.
I, I always think it was close, not right up that first time. Let's have a look, thank you.
Okay, we'll go further north, awesome. Anything else before we open it up to, um, any other part of the district we want to look at? Okay? Anything else before we open up to the public? If that's okay with you, Dave, maybe we... You want to, like, talk about this?
Is there anybody that, uh, that signed into, has any questions or comments on what we've discussed?
Wouldn't I just go to the party?
I'm not, but I, not on this, but I, I didn't sign in.
We'll sign her. Can I have your opinion?
I'm sorry, I didn't sign in, I didn't sign in.
Sign me in, wait, sure. Anybody else come up here?
Thank you guys for your show, that's been doing all this. My name's Sharon McKnight, 62 Miller Lane, and I want to tell Alisa and Kevin, thank you for your little write-up. I found it on the, online about this information, I don't know what you call it, the material for this, so thank you for doing that, because that gave me time to look over it, and I greatly appreciate it. I don't want to talk on this, but I did want to thank you, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak out to us?
But I will, well. No, I'll...
I better sign in, Tom. Okay, my name's Tom Howland, I live at 403 North Fort Thomas, and my house was built in 1908, so I have one on a 38-foot wide lot. So, it's a lot of things that, you know, I'm ready to move. Yeah, the, the first thing, question was why Johnson Elementary, the, the City Hall, and then exclude the rest of that, and then going up, why, I think you already done part of that, which you expanded more to the north end, that, that's a good, good thing to do as well. From the standpoint of other questions, uh, there was a question about parking, being able not to be able to see a parking from Fort Thomas Avenue? Parking slab or parking...
That was a carport.
Okay.
So, I was asking, how do you define where, when you can see it and when you can't see it, and we had some discussion about what exactly is the carport?
Because park, parking in a lot of the structures on Fort Thomas Avenue is extremely limited. And I had to, for, and I got a, a permit years ago, and, uh, got permission to put a parking slab on Side Street. Because when I came home from work, I had to park all the way down in Embarness, to walk all the way up Fort Thomas Avenue, there was just no place to park. Kevin's been very good as far as helping me with, with different things we've done. The shed, my shed is not attached to the building. It's behind the building, you can't see it from the street, that's, I mean, is still gonna be okay for people to do that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but we were talking about shed roofs, but we weren't talking about sheds.
Okay, shed roofs, okay. Porches, um, there's a lot of people, as you said, a lot of people on Fort Thomas Avenue have everything from a narrow porch to a, what you call a stoop, in some cases, it's a, just as wide as a stoop with a roof on it, so it, it becomes a porch. In my case, I've worked for years possibly enclosing my front porch, it's a large front porch, that goes more, it's the whole width, width of the house just about, and the depth is more than four foot, but if I were ever to do that, I would build it to the structural integrity of the home. Is that gonna be permitted, or something has to go to the Board of Adjustments, or? It sounds like you're trying to eliminate that option altogether.
Yes, so is it, we started out the discussion whether or not to have, acquire a porch, and came down to that you're not required to have one if you build a new home, or have a front addition, but what we did say is that you can't enclose a front porch, so yes, as it's currently drafted, you would be prohibited from enclosing your front porch. Now, that's, that's different than, for example, if you're saying that you're actually going to make it architecturally significant and build it into your home, that would be an addition, as opposed to slapping in some screens. Do you, do you see the distinction?
Sure, so, so if I put windows in it as opposed to screen it, then it was an addition.
So if you glass it in, but leave in the, the integrity of the porch, meaning where all the columns are now, that would just be essentially enclosing it as a three-season room, and that would be prohibited. But what I'm saying is if you actually enclosed it and integrated it into your home, that would be considered an addition.
If it was heated, cooled, a habitable space.
Yes, a habitable space.
Okay.
But, e- even in the case that we've talked about tonight, if you did decide to enclose your porch, you know, with a screen or glass or whatever, you could still appeal to the Design Review Board in your particular situation, and at least have it discussed, potentially.
Okay.
Do it, except for we adopt it.
Tom, are you doing about just putting a roof on, or a roof and?
No, I already have a roof, that, I already have a roof, I already have columns, I already have, you know, fancy decorative, um, railings and so forth, so it sounds like what I have to do is I have to go behind the railings and the columns, and if I wanted to enclose that with what I'm doing, as opposed to coming out in front of the columns.
I, I'm not sure I understand, but if you are, when you say come out in front of the columns, do you mean build an addition in front of them?
No, just, if, I, if a, a large, a large home for a small lot, and the whole thing has a porch on the front.
So I think if, if you're making it habitable space, to your heating and your cooling it, then it may be classified as an addition, as opposed to just putting in glass and enclosing it, which this group right now was saying would not be permitted.
Okay. As, last comment, as far as, um, the solar panels, we're all kind of restricted as far as where they can go.
Yeah.
Not necessarily what they face, other than the, the correct position for the sun and so forth. So in my case, mine's in the back, would be, would be in the back of the house, so it would be a problem, but other people in town may not be quite so lucky, so that may be an, an issue you want to look at. Thank you, oh, and last thing is, what time is your meeting at Fort Thomas Coffee?
Um, it's tomorrow morning from 10:00 to 11:45, and 6:00 to 8:00, and we're in that back room.
Okay, thank you.
And coffee's included.
Thank you very much.
Sign in, please. Oh, you did by accident, you took the paper by accident.
Oh.
That's okay. Hi, I'm Paula Benominy, and I live at 18 Gunpowder Ridge.
You're not getting off of that sign.
I'll do this real quick. So I have a couple of questions. The zoning overlay that you're talking about, do we have zoning overlay for homes outside of Rossford, like continuing on to Barrett and Covert? So this overlay is to protect just the homes on North Fort Thomas Avenue?
North and South Fort Thomas Avenue, and, and as Frank said, they have to front on Fort Thomas, and so, yes, but there are no overlay districts being proposed for any of the homes outside of the homes on Fort Thomas Avenue.
And why is that?
I'm just, so the, um, the conversations that we've had is that Fort Thomas Avenue, especially the residential portion, is a defining characteristic of the community, and therefore, it was worth conserving in its current, and protecting in its current state.
Okay, because, like you said, the homes that go past Rossford, big beautiful homes, and I know that there's been discussion about a historical overlay, I know Matt Kramer's on board with this, we've had Beth from the Historic Society come and talk about a historical overlay. Is this being talked about, about with the homes, the big homes that you're talking about in Fort Thomas, and this historical overlay for some of these homes?
As, as a part of this process, right, um, as a part of this process, no. I think, um, what Matt has said is it would be something that would be looked at in the future, but as a part of this zoning update process, no landmarks are being established, which is what we, you know, you would call typically, a, a, a single-family home here, and a single-family home there, as opposed to a whole district.
Okay.
The individual property owner can do that if they wish to pursue it, there's no prohibition, prohibition of, of anybody doing that for their property.
What, getting a hu- historical overlay?
Not an overlay, but if you can, you can have your property, if it's eligible, and it would have to be evaluated by a professional architectural historian, it could be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places and be a national historic landmark, but that process doesn't necessarily have to go through the city.
Okay, I just think we talk about the beautiful homes and the preservation and the character of Fort Thomas, and I think that that is something that the Planning Commission, as well as Design Commission, as well as City Council should look into, to keep the historical overlay, to implement one to the city, because that is what Fort Thomas is known for, and I would like to preserve that, and I can tell by your comments tonight, I think you're all on board with that as well. And I think you should go as far to Covert Run.
I'm sorry, what, as far as where?
To Covert Run.
Covert Run?
Yeah.
Ross Street.
Well, no, Clover Ridge, and then there's Covert Run.
Ross Street. I think that's...
We should talk about Covert Run.
Covert Run, yeah. Yeah, to a little further north, and then it stops, yeah. Yeah, couple blocks. And thank you all, I, I appreciate tonight, I learned a lot, and, um, it's good to know that you're all on board to preserving our town and keeping the beauty and the character. Thanks.
So moving on to the Central Business District Historic Overlay District. Local historic districts were created for Downtown and Midway in the General Code of Ordinances, that's just the Code of Ordinances outside of the zoning ordinance in 2002. And while these historic districts were formed outside of the zoning ordinance, you're gonna hear them say that several times, they do reference the Central Business District zoning district, in fact, at that point in time, through that ordinance, they use that language, it covers the Central Business District in terms of how it's zoned. In 2002, the Design Review Board was formed, and the design guidelines were adopted. So as I said, the local historic districts for Downtown and Midway encompass all the parcels zoned CBD near Central Business District. The boundaries of the Central Business District as they exist today are shown on the screen. Uh, because these local historic districts were outside of the zoning ordinance, there is literally nothing right now on the zoning map that indicates that these parcels are subject to additional regulations beyond, uh, the normal zoning ordinance standards. And in order to make it more clear that the parcels in the Central Business District are in a local historic district, we are proposing to create a Central Business District Historical Overlay District as part of the zoning ordinance update.
Just to clarify, will that include the CBD and Midway, or just the CBD?
No, it's both of them, so it's Downtown and Midway.
So it's the CBD zoning district?
It is the CBD zoning district, as it is, and keep that in mind, if it is zone CBD, it will be included in this district, because that's how the original ordinance was drafted. It says the local historic districts are those parcels zoned Central Business District, so that is Downtown and Midway.
So I guess one question about Midway, so would it not make sense for the Historic Overlay District to actually match the National Historic District?
I can see where that would be, um, make sense, the direction we have received so far is to integrate the historic districts as they were created in 2002 into the design, into this overlay district.
Because the National Historic District for Midway was established in 2008.
Okay.
So it would seem that the overlay district for Midway should adhere to the National Historic District of Midway.
Do you know how it differs, off the top of your head?
It stops at Best Furniture, and actually Best is not, it, it's in the district, but it's not a contributing structure, so that's where it stops on the south, and I can't remember how far it goes to the north, obviously, off the top of my head. I think it goes up to, uh, Grassroots and Vine, maybe the Sensei Bell Building, but I can't remember.
So that's the, as I said, that's the direction that we have received, is that to really and truly integrate what was passed in 2002 into this overlay district.
But that further action was done after the creation of the district in 2002.
Right, but as we, as you just mentioned to, um, to our former speaker, the historic, National Register District is separate and distinct from
Correct.
our local district, and just so that everyone knows, when you get your property listed on the National Register, that is just all it is, it's listed. There are no restrictions in terms of what you can do to your property that come from the listing on the National Register. All that can happen is that if you do something that changes the structure, you get delisted from the National Register. So that is the distinction between the two, just because it is in a, is a National Register.
And the other distinction is, if it is truly in the National Historic District and listed as such, potentially anyway, you can be eligible for federal tax, federal state tax credits for renovation, and the city could be eligible for additional grant money to also do renovation.
Correct, well, but at the state level, you need to be a CLG, a certified local government, but if you are listed on the National Register, you then do have the ability to apply for the federal ones, so there are some duances.
An individual can apply for state.
Right.
Which, which you can't, so in Fort Thomas today, we don't really, um, the only real defined historic district in Fort Thomas are the Fort, which was established in 1986, and a portion of Midway, which was established in 2008. The Central Business District out here is not federally listed in the eyes of the state and in the eyes of the federal government, it's not, I mean, we define it as a historic district, but in terms of the state and the federal government, it's not a historic district.
It's local.
It's a local.
It's a local district.
Yeah, I thought all that, okay.
So, just to clarify, I mean, I know it could be confusing, so, so the residents, like, if you're a resident or a property owner in the CBD here, at this time, you wouldn't be eligible for tax credits, because it's not been, not gone through the formal process of being established as a historic.
The process had been started, but it, it wasn't completed.
Correct, that's correct.
But they're looking to complete it.
Well, that's a whole...
That's our understanding.
The, the central, uh, the CLG process is separate and distinct from this process, certified local government process. All we're doing at this point is codifying what happened in 2002 into the zoning ordinance.
What about the homes in, in the Ford area, is that a separate?
That's a, that's in the Tower, that's in the Tower Park, well, Fort Thomas Milkshake Reservation Historic District, so yes, all those homes are currently in National Historic District.
And we'll get to how we're gonna deal with that locally as the next topic of conversation. So the intent for this new overlay district is to safeguard the heritage of Fort Thomas, and the wording for the intent is actually on the screen. Because our process for reviewing alterations of the CBD already exists in the General Code of Ordinances, all this section does is reference the existing code language, the process, the design guidelines that they're reviewed under, all of that is already in that ordinance, in the General Code of Ordinances that was passed in 2002. As a result of that, the existing review process is retained, the Design Review Board will continue, continue to issue most certificates of appropriateness, and that's the name of the approval that's given by the Design Review Board, and all the alterations will be subject to the design guidelines for the Central Business District. All of that is currently already in the General Code of Ordinances, and so all this code section does is reference all of that. We did add language stating that property owners do have a duty to maintain and repair their buildings in the Central Business District, and we expressly stated that repairs and maintenance may be undertaken without or certificate of appropriateness, provided the work does not change the exterior appearance as visible from the public right-of-way. So in other words, if your house is gray today, and you want to paint it the same shade of gray, you do not have to go in front of the Design Review Board to get that approved, so that's all that does. We expressly allowed that. So at this point, um, do you have any concerns about this design review overlay, this historic overlay, sorry?
My only question is, isn't the duty to maintain and repair already in the zoning, the CBD zoning code anyway? I mean, are we creating a, a new requirement that isn't already there?
I mean, we have a Property Maintenance Code, but beyond that, we don't have, you know, is this adding a little bit of meat to that, or?
It's just adding a little bit of meat, again, in, in many cases, you are, this is a very easy thing for someone to pull up on the web and say, this is my responsibilities, because I have a building in this district, as opposed to trying to find the International Property Maintenance Code, which is referenced in the Code of Ordinances, which says that you adopted in, in 2012, you adopted the International Property Maintenance Code version 2009, and then the person has to go find the 2009 version of the International Property Maintenance Code. Do you see where I'm going?
I get that, I guess all I'm saying is, why, why isn't the duty maintained and repaired for the entire city, is all, I guess, that's what I'm saying.
Well, and there is, I mean, and, and we have, uh, certain areas where we're issuing code violations and leaning property. Now, one of my questions would be, in municipalities, of municipalities, have you ever seen a situation where, in this type of overlay, if someone was not... a situation where in this type of overlay, if someone was not taking care of routine maintenance, that the city deemed either dangerous or significant, that they could endeavor to
Yes.
repairs and then clean the property?
Yes, that is a common standard, that if it is having an issue, you come in, you do the maintenance, and then you put it properly on. We can add that as well, as a very common standard. It is not currently in your, in the existing ordinance, and I did not put it here, but we can do that.
I think it would be important to add it.
I mean, I don't disagree it's important to do. I guess all I'm saying is, what makes this district special from any other district in the city, I guess is all I'm saying.
Well, because it's a Historic District.
Yeah, but the duty to maintain and repair is for any structure in the city.
But that's outside of the zoning ordinance. This is in the zoning ordinance, and again, it's just a
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying. Why don't we change the zoning ordinance to make it applicable to all districts? That duty to maintain and repair.
This is just special and different.
How is it different? If you're not going to paint your house and your gutter's falling off, what purpose would make it appear anywhere else?
In a end
That's all I'm asking.
But I would say that, you know, you're talking about an area that is, defines the entire city, and so.
Well, I mean, just like the overlay district on Fort Thomas Avenue, wouldn't you have the same duty to repair and maintain in that district? Who related to that?
And I understand what you're saying, I'm just
Yeah, that's all I guess I'm saying is, why would you, why would you isolate it to this district?
Because it is a Historic District. And you also
Not really.
It is a local Historic District, and we are giving them a vehicle, because this language is there, to then issue a notice of violation under the zoning ordinance to repair it, as opposed to then having to go under other portions of the building code. So that's why it's there. It becomes a violation of the zoning ordinance and another way, another tool, to get things repaired.
I guess to me, I would expand it to the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District, because that's all I'm saying. If you're trying to maintain the character of the city, and these houses are no more historic than those houses are, from that perspective.
Does the board want to put the duty to maintain and repair in the Fort Thomas Overlay?
That would be okay.
Okay, we can do it. All right, any other concerns with this overlay district and its provisions? Again, all we're doing is codifying into the zoning ordinance, what was already done. So we are proposing a completely new local Historic District, which includes the residential parcels in Tower Park. So some of these Historic Neighborhoods were previously regulated, but now some of these legal instruments are defunct. So for example, one of the HOAs that govern some of these parcels has been disbanded.
Which one?
Pearson Street.
It still has an HOA.
Okay, I was told
We're in the process of
We're attempting to remove the HOA, but we still have an HOA on the street.
Okay. But again, as I understand it, it's difficult to enforce the standards, and so at this point in time, because there's an interest to maintain those historic structures and to provide a vehicle by which violations can be issued if they aren't maintained, and if they don't have alterations that are in conformance with the design guidelines. So that is the intent for this. So these are the parcels that are included. So it's Pearson Street, Green Street, and the homes that front on Cochrane Avenue and Alexander Circle.
That also puts a new house on Alexander Street.
It does, yeah. So like the CBD Historic Overlay District, the intent of this district is to safeguard the history and heritage of the dwellings in Tower Park. The review process for homes in Tower Park is consistent with the process for the CBD Historic Overlay District. When the city agreed to take control of the homes on Alexander Circle and Cochrane Avenue in 2014, provisions were established and added into the CBD Local Historic District in the Code of Ordinances that stated that these homes would be reviewed by the Design Review Board, that they would be subject to the Fort Thomas VA Architectural Guidelines, which are available, so that that continues, and that there were also alterations would be reviewed according to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So that process is retained in this, and then will continue to be, the alterations will continue to be reviewed under those two instruments. For the parcels on Green and Pearson Street, alterations will be reviewed based on the U.S. Secretary of Standards for Rehabilitation, which are actually in the ordinance, and the associated guidelines for rehabilitating historic buildings. And that's a document about yay thick. So obviously, it is referenced, but it is not included. So just for your information, many, many communities use the Secretary of Standards for Rehabilitation to review alterations, as well as these guidelines. So we are not in any way an outlier by not having a separate set of standards and guidelines for this district like we do for Downtown. Many, many communities, you know, take advantage of what the Secretary of Interior has done and use these standards and guidelines to review projects.
And I think Kevin and I talked about this, isn't there a restrictive covenant on those Pearson Street and Green Street that go with the D that basically reference back with the standard, the Interior Department standard?
Some of them have them. Tim and I have had conversations about the legality of those, and he can sort of talk a little bit more about that. But again, there is no ability, even if those are on the books and restrictive covenants exist on the lots, there is, who is enforcing that?
Correct, I get that, but I
But yes, answer is yes.
And so again, we included the duty to maintain and the duty to repair.
How would they
So any concerns with this new overlay district and its provisions? Same process, all of those things that we would
The only one I would, like I said, I have a question is, the new house and the certificate of appropriateness, because it's not a historic house. It's dual.
It's made to look like one, so it should be, it should be included. It's made to look like it, so it needs to keep up.
Right, but it wouldn't be subject to the Department of Interior Rehabilitation standards?
In some ways, it will be, right? I mean, the improvement, talk to that home.
But it only applies to historic.
We are forcing it to apply in this situation, because we are mapping it, so.
I understand you're mapping it, so.
So, I mean, we are, in this case, we are making it that way. If you want to specifically exclude it, we can do that, but I think that it's appropriate, given the way it was designed and built.
It's in the district, I just think.
It's in the district.
In the requiring a certificate of appropriateness, I think the property owner could have some standing to say, that's not applicable to the homes, since it's not a historic structure. But
Well, Tim and I can have a conversation about whether, about that, and whether or not we need to do something to
Because that's not part of the, that's within the National Historic District范围, but it's not a historic structure.
Well, Tim and I will talk about whether or not he has any concerns offline about the home.
I don't think this would be, I'm just, that's the only example I could think where it may not apply, as far as the COA goes.
Okay, so Tim and I will talk about that.
And what about VA homes, potential guidelines, because they're all incorporated in the sample log?
Right. Oh, that's true, because
And those were based on, yeah, Secretary of Standards for Rehabilitation.
And actually, the ordinance that created that and added it to Chapter 36 in the code says, all of those homes are subject to those standards and the VA standards for National Registering, excuse me.
So not just the VA homes, but the new lots?
Yeah, yeah. I believe that's what that section says.
I don't know, I'm asking.
I think it does, but I'll look more closely. Yeah. But I suspect when that language was drafted, no one made that distinction. All right, if you'd cheer for what we've done before.
Does anybody want to speak on the two topics we just said?
I just wanted to say you're right, because
Come on up, come on up.
Sign up. Hard. Hi, hi, my name is, I'll write this down, since I'm talking to save time, Melanie Powers and I live on Pearson Street. And I was having a lot of fun today reading that giant interior. As was, yeah, dry, very dry. And so I could be wrong about it, right? No pop quizzes, please. But I was also reading what Alicia referenced, which is the MOA, the Memorandum of Agreement, that the city made with VA. And it gets very specific, actually, in there about all kinds of things. And both in the interior, but more so in the MOA, as I said, they're real specific, and they do address new construction in there. Both like new-new is on Alexander Circle, and then if you're doing substantial additions. So I don't think legally that there's any problem with incorporating that one new house there. I'll go back, I have it on a PDF on my desktop, and I drink coffee and just read through it. And I can send it to anybody that needs it. I also have an interesting one from Franklin, Tennessee, when I've been doing my own research. Hope you can hear me. And they did, you know, they're not too much bigger than we are, so it's kind of same goals, same kind of town, more strict for sure than we are. But anyway, they took those, that same Department of Interior and then rewrote it a little bit in a nice little colorful booklet, that I think you'd love to see how they did that. Or you can do it yourself, just Google Historic Guidelines Franklin, Tennessee, and a nice little booklet, you can page through it, full color, where they did that same kind of thing for a Historic District, not like what we're talking about, a general overlay, if that makes sense, what I'm saying? So anyway, but I do think that house is easily covered and enforceable legally. And you were right, it is kind of addressed in that MOA. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sharon McKnight, 62 Miller Lane. We had that nice lady, Beth Johnson, from the Cincinnati Preservation Association, talk to the city council last month, and I'm trying to understand if this is correct. So you've got, you have a local Historic District, which is the CBD, then you have the National, which is the Midway, and then you, and the park, correct? Is that what we're dealing with? Okay, so we already have guidelines for that, and that's the Design Review Manual or Procedure. So those are the guidelines you go by for all of those districts, correct?
For Downtown, or Townstoneers that sometimes refer to, and Midway.
Okay, okay.
Only, the ones that were, that were adopted in 2002 are for those two districts right now. And then for the Tower Park that we're establishing, this is brand new, this has never happened before within the city, we would be using the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and the associated guidelines, with the exception of the homes that are on Cochrane and Alexander Circle, because they were actually integrated into that original Section 36 in the Code of Ordinances when that was done. So I realize this is a very long, confusing answer.
Now, that's all right. This has all been long and confusing, but I'm getting some clarity, and I appreciate you guys, your patience with my questions, since I live in the CBD district area. So my question is, when you're talking about overlay, because we already have something that has guidelines, and they have to follow those guidelines when it comes to those districts, correct? But if you want that extra protection, you have this overlay to enforce, correct? Is that what we're talking about? Because I know Bellevue has, like on Fairfield, they have a protective historic overlay. So they have, you've got to follow these when you live in these districts, and the people that come in and like want to build, or you know, they are, they're giving that same information, you've got to follow these guidelines. Because this is a historic, you know, district and has a protective overlay on top of it, correct?
So let's back up for a second.
Okay.
So everybody has zoning, and that's the best layer. In 2002, for whatever reason, and I don't know why, a local Historic District was created for Downtown, where we're sitting.
Yes.
And the Midway. And as Dave pointed out, the National Register District for Midway is different. But for those two districts, if it was zoned CBD, it was included in those districts. Now, the problem with that is that when you look at a zoning map, which is where everyone goes to figure out what you can do with your property, you don't see the fact that those are local Historic Districts. And you have no ability to know that, for example, you are buying into a Historic District. So what this does is add a zoning overlay on top of those underlying districts, but because all of that stuff was already created in 2002, we are just integrating it into this overlay district, just referencing all of it and forcing it to sit on the map. So let me show you what I'm talking about.
Okay, because I know Bellevue has the historic protective overlay, and which I thought that's the direction you guys
That's what this is.
Okay, okay. Because I know Bellevue has like the copy and paste.
But that's what, that's actually what that, you see what's on the screen?
Yes, I see that.
Where you have those hash marks, that denotes on a zoning map that you have a Historic Overlay. So that's what this does.
Okay, but that was never put in before?
Correct, it was not done in 2002. I don't know why.
Okay, that's fine. So we're moving forward with this. So is this going to be like this altogether, like some kind of ordinance that goes hand in hand with the, with the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, and the Design Review Board, that they're all on the same page with this?
So this will all be integrated into one document, that is the zoning ordinance. So that if you want to know what's going on with your property, you pull the zoning ordinance, and it will tell you all of it. And so then, yes, it would be available to all the boards to use.
Correct, okay. And Kevin, is that, is that what you give to people when they come in and they want to develop in those areas?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Well, they would have it online, and they can access it and see and feel it, so yes.
Oh, I know, but I've been to some of those meetings, and there's a lot of back and forth, but if this is, this is how it is, then they know that ahead of time
Yep.
before coming there and saying, hey, you know, I didn't know this. You know what I mean?
Right.
Okay, so that's all we're asking, to make sure that's the extra protection.
Yep, that's what's happening.
Well, thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
Does anybody else wish to speak or comment?
My name is Jeff Eilman, I live on 5 Pearson Street. I guess my question is, when we bought our home, we had D restrictions on our house, that said we had to follow X, Y, and Z. So if we already have those restrictions, why are we putting an overlay over top of it? We already have restrictions to our home, my house, my porch has to be green, I have to use a certain color for the trim, I can't, I've already got restrictions on the homes. Why would we add more, if that makes sense? That's the part I'd always say, like, you know, my concern is, is okay, what if someone says, well, they don't like the way I redo my front porch, can they come in and say, you've got to fix it?
We're not adding more, it's, it's putting it in one spot. Like Elisa said, it's kind of, so the next person that buys that they might not be aware of it, it's all in one spot. Or if somebody's interested in buying it, it's all in one spot, and it's just kind of cleaning it up, a lot of cleanup. There's not really any more restrictions to Pearson Street.
So they would just be basically the same restrictions we have on our HOA.
Yeah, I mean, the overlay district should reference the restrictions that you have, essentially.
Okay, so then that, so that'll all be in the overlay, this is the restrictions currently that we have on Pearson Street?
It just gives the city an enforcement mechanism to say, hey, you're not adhering to whatever the restrictions are.
And then you will also be, before, you did not have to go in front of a board to have any improvements that you make to your home reviews, except for whatever may have been for your HOA?
Because the HOA has it written that if I want to change the paint colors, I have to give a letter to the city, because the city is still considered developer in our HOA. When we split from Green Street, we were unable to write the city out as a developer, and they would not give, the person in charge at the time would not give that up. So they still have So they still have developer rights to our street. We just have to give it- so I would have to write a letter, I guess, to Kevin and say, hey, I would like to change my paint color to navy blue.
And you would have to go in front of the Design Review Board, which is a step that you currently don't have.
Okay, so it would just add to the- you'd have to go, I'm just writing it down.
Yep, you have to go in front of the Design Review Board, and in addition to whatever is attached to your deed, the guidelines that they would be using are the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation.
And I think those are already referenced.
And I think those are already referenced in your deed.
Now, do you have an easy guide synopsis, the dummies for reform? I don't have time to sit and read through this packet. Is there something out there that would-
Just to back up, we're not- this hasn't been any- no, this has been adopted.
Oh, I know.
But it's a year out still.
I just want to know, is there a Dummies Guide to U.S. Secretary of Interior Design for Rehab and-
So the standards themselves are actually in that draft ordinance, and so you can see what those standards are. But they're fairly broad, so a number of years ago, the Secretary of Interior did actually develop those guidelines, and I'm not exaggerating about that thick.
Right.
And no, I don't have a Dummies Guide for that.
His one was 500 pages.
Sounds like great reading, but I'll pass.
Yeah, I'll leave you have insomnia. So, but I apologize, there's not.
Okay.
But the standards themselves are listed in that draft text, which are on the website.
It's on the city website?
Yes, sir, it is.
And what this helps us do, if your neighbor, you're doing all the things you're supposed to, you're supposed to, the HOA agreement, restrictive covenants, your neighbor stops doing it, hedges the heck out of you that he's not doing what he's supposed to, this helps us to make him bill.
Okay. Makes sense?
If it stays the same, why are you calling it an overlay?
Because today, there is nothing on the public record that shows that these parcels have any historic restrictions on them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
I guess one question I had, going back to the Midway District, is, has council ever considered revising that portion, the Section 36 in the ordinance, to be consistent with the work that was done in 2008 after they passed that original ordinance?
I can't say, I can't speak to that, I don't know.
I mean, in my mind, I think that's something that council should reevaluate the applicable portions of the Midway to make it consistent with the work that the city did in 2008. Because I don't think that was ever- that loop was- that was never circled back and closed that loop, essentially.
Yeah, I might get with you and talk about that a little bit more, and make sure I have the right direction, how to ask the question, because I wasn't here and I don't remember.
Right. And I don't think the current council was aware of any of that either, so.
Yeah, probably not.
But I think moving forward, it would make- it should make life easier if it was consistent.
And we could have that, I mean, that's a policy question that we could have with council, and have a map that shows-
Right, and ultimately, I think that if we do the overlay for Midway, it should be consistent with what the actual historic district is and not different.
Not with the zoning district, not being-
Not necessarily, but not with the way it was defined in 2000.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
That's all I'm saying. And if they modify the 2002 ordinance to make it consistent, then it would all be consistent. Because the city's the one that initiated the work in 2008.
All right. Any other discussions on that? So next month, hold on to your hats, we're going to be talking about regulations that took hold all districts, like signs and accessory uses and accessory structures, more riveting conversation and reading for when you have insomnia.
So really quickly, Mark brought something to my attention today, Mark Stewart, our zoning administrator, that he had an inquiry, and it might flow really well with the signage discussion. We had a request that they want to move forward with a tax amendment and not wait for the zoning ordinance revisions for digital signage for churches. So we did have a revision a couple of years ago through this board to add digital signage to schools. And the rationale behind that was, the schools actually are public entities, which we couldn't regulate, so the public schools. And we couldn't regulate public entities, we don't have any zoning power over the library, or, you know, they have a sign, and those public entities that we cannot regulate. So we added it for the other schools, parochial schools. The question is, you know, they want to ask the question and move forward before we adopt this language to add digital signage for churches. And kind of wanted to just feel you all out, what your thought process is. If you- I know that the last time we discussed, we zeroed in on the schools and not the churches. You know, they can formally ask that question next month, but didn't want to waste their time if you didn't think that that was something that ultimately you have to apply for as the Planning Commission, it's a tax amendment. So didn't know if you had any feedback, or, you know, as it relates to churches.
There's so many, and there's so many residential homes around them.
Yeah.
The whole thing electrical was running text, running pictures, how disruptive the traffic, how disruptive the drivers going by. And like you say, we left the other stuff because we didn't touch it.
Right.
But we always tried to keep our signage under control, keep away from flashing, any of that. So I think that's the bigger thing, I'm not whether they have it or not, but how they use it.
Well, I think the question, there's a big question on whether they have it. I mean, like you said, like-
The old sign where they changed the letters.
Right.
And if that's all they did to it, it would be not very disruptive. You have to turn them off at night so they're not candles. But if you only change that once a week, that's totally different than if you're running stuff. That's what's the whole thing, electronic signs, period.
So to interject about this, just to sort of give you a frame, you can regulate how often they change the message, you can regulate the level of illumination, you can regulate that they cannot have sound, you can do all of those things.
But it was the enforcement part at the time, we thought, how do we enforce it?
Well, we have that, and we have looked at that. You know, that's definitely something that, and not so much with, I mean, literally, there's probably one sign that we've looked at, and that's the one that we can regulate, would be St. Thomas. And we do have those standards in there for the length of the- I think it has to be 10 seconds, and there is an illumination level, and there are those elements that are in that language. The question is, do we want to add churches to this, that language? That's- I think we can tweak the other language if we need to modify it with new technology, whatever else, that's easy. The question is, do we want to add churches to it?
Well, again, if you think about North Fort Thomas and South Fort Thomas, how many churches are on that street alone? Everybody put one up.
We have 13 churches in town.
Wow.
But how many are on that street alone?
Almost all on the main track.
Almost all?
But if you do it to churches, then you have everybody else business-wise, it was the same thing.
Well, I just think that there's so many, my greatest, there's so many above, you'd be just having flash and sign go running around.
I guess, Kevin, I guess what I would think is, maybe we have the broader signage discussion next month, and then wait until after that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of complaints you get on electronic signs.
No, I mean, usually, it's the first month, you know, them feeling it out. After that, I don't get any complaints. You know, it's just that first, wow, this is different, this is new, and then after that, I don't get any.
I don't think it should be in the historic district, here you go. Which is all North Fort Thomas and South Fort Thomas. Anywhere else, they can have one.
Kevin, who's looking for this excellence? What brought that up?
So the issue is, and why they want to pursue it, is there is a person who's willing to donate the money for the signage and wants immediate action. They're an elderly person that wants to assure that they're donating this money and it goes to this cause, and really don't want to wait six months or a year to make sure, they want to get moving on it. And so, I mean, obviously, they have the opportunity to come to us with a formal application and have this conversation. And once again, they just didn't want to delay that for us to pass the language. But, you know, with us discussing that next week, certainly, or next month, I'm sorry, it might go hand in hand with it, we might have them come visit, and/or they may want to have a formal application, you know. So it, I'll kind of, I can- they can certainly do that, have a formal application before us, so it might be part of our conversation.
Do we spend a whole lot more time on it? I don't like to use some research on it. Do I ask you what we're doing, we can't do? I think there are some issues that need to be buried it down.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a bigger, like Dan was saying, just to echo, I think there's some, some of the signs of, when I remember the discussions we had about the digital signs 10, 15 years ago, when they were first becoming an issue, when they were incorporated in the ordinance, there was a lot of discussion about the luminosity, the colors, the changing of the message, the hours of operation. And to me, it seems like it's maybe gone a little farther than what the original intent was 10 or 15 years ago from this body at that time.
They discussed internal, or-
Just the technology that-
It's evolved, and quite honestly, the biggest complaints from people that have talked to me the most recently is the city's own sign. I've had a lot of people say that, I mean, that thing is kind of offensive. So, you know, I think it's going to be difficult for the city to impose standards that the city itself will follow, so.
We spent the last hour talking about maintaining the historic nature of the avenue, and having the opening of such to having a dozen electronic signs.
And once again, that's why the question was to be asked, and they are not in this district, this particular church, but, and maybe that's a factor, maybe it isn't. Like, you know, could this snowball into somebody, the next person asking, you know, where does it stop? And I'm not sure what the national trends are, but I think that's definitely part of the discussion.
I think that was always the issue, too. You know, if there's a business that was on it.
I mean, everybody's issues being on discriminating-
The deep, dark, ugly one.
I'll generate some research on it and give it to you guys.
I mean, Kevin could do some slides on what the existing sign is.
Yeah, it'd be good to know.
How do we control our sign now, and that's where we are? And like I say, we kept breaking this down over 30 years.
One of my bigger concerns is discriminating against religious practice and-
And we'll have a whole long session about, you know, there's these sign regulations and all of that.
There's a, there's an entire federal law, and it's been litigated a number of times. I'm just getting into it now, more really, Alicia was helping me with it. It's called reluba, and one of the things it says is, land use provisions under Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000 protects individuals' houses of worship and other religious institutions from discrimination and zoning and landmark.
It can't be regulated different from anybody else, essentially.
No, I understand that.
I'm just telling you, I would want to dig into it more before we really answer these questions. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, Tim, I'll talk to you about something afterwards.
Okay.
I move your adjournment.
Move to second. Your adjournment, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening.